You Nazi hate me, Mr. Grinch. With an ushers super nose. Your grin is full of spiders. You've got garlic in your soul, Mr. Grinch.
I am the one who's always been there. In the darkness, the trees are full of starlight. On the outside, always looking in. Will I ever be more than I've always been? I hear those jingles, bells in the air. Ringing out the sound of joy everywhere.
Everywhere you go. Take a look at the five ten.
Six, gimme, gimme, seven, gimme, gimme, eight. Four, two.
Now watch me spin. I'll spin my droid droid. Now watch me spin. Shit, non-gimmal, hey, hey.
I wish I had a river. I could skate way on. Let the candles light the night up from the windowsills. Ooh, as I draw you near. I'm just gonna keep on waiting underneath a mistletoe.
It feels new, just like a melody I've never heard before.
It feels new, just like the breaking of the dawn in early morning.
It feels new, just like a second chance. A time to wake up for the past. There's hope in this new world I see. That's changing right in front of me.
Everything keeps us apart. I'm not the one who's meant to fight. It's not up to you and it's not up to me. When everyone tells us what we can be. Why can't we ride the stars? Still, the world could be ours tonight.
I won't be made bacon for anybody!
Well, you certainly gave us a run!
Mr. Zuckerman, Mrs. Zuckerman, this is what I was trying to tell you about.
A miracle has happened on this farm.
Day things get rough. Then we just gotta be tough. We're made of the stuff that makes men mad. We're gonna come through. And friends, when we do. We'll never know bad times. Goodbye to the sad times. We'll only know good times again.
Hark, haw the bells, sweet silver bells. All seem to say, "Don't care so much." Christmas is here, bringing a cheer to young and old. Meek and bold. Ding dong, ding dong, that is their song. With joyful ring, all caroling. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air. Oh, wally, wally, raise your stuff. Boy, willy, da, tell your town. Giddy, giddy, while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. On when they said, "On without end." Then drivel told you every word.
Wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. And a happy new year. Holiday row, oh, 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 oh. Holiday row, oh, 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 oh.
Come on, let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Want us tonight? Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Want us tonight?
You Nazi hate me, Mr. Grinch. With an ushers super nose. Your grin is full of spiders. You've got garlic in your soul, Mr. Grinch.
I am the one who's always been there. In the darkness, the trees are full of starlight. On the outside, always looking in. Will I ever be more than I've always been? I hear those jingles, bells in the air. Ringing out the sound of joy everywhere.
Everywhere you go. Take a look at the five ten.
Six, gimme, gimme, seven, gimme, gimme, eight. Four, two.
Now watch me spin. I'll spin my droid droid. Now watch me spin. Shit, non-gimmal, hey, hey.
I wish I had a river. I could skate way on. Let the candles light the night up from the windowsills. Ooh, as I draw you near. I'm just gonna keep on waiting underneath a mistletoe.
It feels new, just like a melody I've never heard before.
It feels new, just like the breaking of the dawn in early morning.
It feels new, just like a second chance. A time to wake up for the past. There's hope in this new world I see. That's changing right in front of me.
Everything keeps us apart. I'm not the one who's meant to fight. It's not up to you and it's not up to me. When everyone tells us what we can be. Why can't we ride the stars? Still, the world could be ours tonight.
I won't be made bacon for anybody!
Well, you certainly gave us a run!
Mr. Zuckerman, Mrs. Zuckerman, this is what I was trying to tell you about.
A miracle has happened on this farm.
Day things get rough. Then we just gotta be tough. We're made of the stuff that makes men mad. We're gonna come through. And friends, when we do. We'll never know bad times. Goodbye to the sad times. We'll only know good times again.
Hark, haw the bells, sweet silver bells. All seem to say, "Don't care so much." Christmas is here, bringing a cheer to young and old. Meek and bold. Ding dong, ding dong, that is their song. With joyful ring, all caroling. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air. Oh, wally, wally, raise your stuff. Boy, willy, da, tell your town. Giddy, giddy, while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. On when they said, "On without end." Then drivel told you every word.
Wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. And a happy new year. Holiday row, oh, 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 oh. Holiday row, oh, 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 oh.
Come on, let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Want us tonight? Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Want us tonight?
You Nazi hate me, Mr. Grinch. With an ushers super nose. Your grin is full of spiders. You've got garlic in your soul, Mr. Grinch.
I am the one who's always been there. In the darkness, the trees are full of starlight. On the outside, always looking in. Will I ever be more than I've always been? I hear those jingles, bells in the air. Ringing out the sound of joy everywhere.
Everywhere you go. Take a look at the five ten.
Six, gimme, gimme, seven, gimme, gimme, eight. Four, two.
Now watch me spin. I'll spin my droid droid. Now watch me spin. Shit, non-gimmal, hey, hey.
I wish I had a river. I could skate way on. Let the candles light the night up from the windowsills. Ooh, as I draw you near. I'm just gonna keep on waiting underneath a mistletoe.
It feels new, just like a melody I've never heard before.
It feels new, just like the breaking of the dawn in early morning.
It feels new, just like a second chance. A time to wake up for the past. There's hope in this new world I see. That's changing right in front of me.
Everything keeps us apart. I'm not the one who's meant to fight. It's not up to you and it's not up to me. When everyone tells us what we can be. Why can't we ride the stars? Still, the world could be ours tonight.
I won't be made bacon for anybody!
Well, you certainly gave us a run!
Mr. Zuckerman, Mrs. Zuckerman, this is what I was trying to tell you about.
A miracle has happened on this farm.
Day things get rough. Then we just gotta be tough. We're made of the stuff that makes men mad. We're gonna come through. And friends, when we do. We'll never know bad times. Goodbye to the sad times. We'll only know good times again.
Hark, haw the bells, sweet silver bells. All seem to say, "Don't care so much." Christmas is here, bringing a cheer to young and old. Meek and bold. Ding dong, ding dong, that is their song. With joyful ring, all caroling. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air. Oh, wally, wally, raise your stuff. Boy, willy, da, tell your town. Giddy, giddy, while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. On when they said, "On without end." Then drivel told you every word.
Wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. And a happy new year. Holiday row, oh, 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 oh. Holiday row, oh, 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 oh.
Come on, let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Want us tonight? Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Let's celebrate. Want us tonight?
You Nazi hate me, Mr. Grinch. With an ushers super nose. Your grin is full of spiders. You've got garlic in your soul, Mr. Grinch.
I am the one who's always been there. In the darkness, the trees are full of starlight. On the outside, always looking in. Will I ever be more than I've always been? I hear those jingles, bells in the air. Ringing out the sound of joy everywhere.
Everywhere you go. Take a look at the five ten.
Six, gimme, gimme, seven, gimme, gimme, eight. Four, two.
Now watch me spin. I'll spin my droid droid. Now watch me spin. Shit, non-gimmal, hey, hey.
I wish I had a river. I could skate way on. Let the candles light the night up from the windowsills. Ooh, as I draw you near. I'm just gonna keep on waiting underneath a mistletoe.
It feels new, just like a melody I've never heard before.
It feels new, just like the breaking of the dawn in early morning.
It feels new, just like a second chance. A time to wake up for the past. There's hope in this new world I see. That's changing right in front of me.
Everything keeps us apart. I'm not the one who's meant to fight. It's not up to you and it's not up to me. When everyone tells us what we can be. Why can't we ride the stars? Still, the world could be ours tonight.
Calling this meeting to order. Please stand, salute our flag, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and earthy and just as for all.
This meeting is compliant with the Open Public Meeting Law and has been duly advertised in a newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Dr. Osman?
Here.
Mr. Palmieri?
Present.
Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Walsh?
Present. I need a motion for approval of a Board of Education member resignation.
Motion.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. In closed session today, the board interviewed candidates for the open board position. We had thirteen candidates, which was a fantastic turnout and a lot of interest from the public. We have... We are about to select... Oh! I'm going to remind you, for the candidates who were not selected, that there will be two positions open next July. You can put in for it then and vote on it next November. Motion to open nominations.
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 No. Alright. We switched it up. Okay, is there anyone who would like to nominate a candidate?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Bryan- Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Brian McCarron.
Is there any other nominations? Oh. I need a second. Is there any other nominations? Seeing no nominations, I would like to make a motion to close nominations.
Motion. Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 Okay, a resolution that the board approves Mr. Brian McCarron to fill the vacant seat left by Mr. Sargent.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
We feel that Brian's law enforcement background and that his experience as an SRO officer in a school system will add a level of depth to our board that we currently do not have.
I would say I was very impressed by the candidates and their qualifications who put in for the position. I wish that you would put in for the position next July for the next three-year term. Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. At this point, I am going to turn the mic over to the superintendent. Now I'm going to turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you. Mr. Coffin, if you will come up? I'm sorry, mister... What's the name again?
Harry.
McCarron, I'm sorry. I'm just so bad. Brian McCarron. And because I did not have time to prepare this, we will just...
Aye, Brian McCarron.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support...
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Brian McCarron.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
You are not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 1941.
I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 1941.
You are not disqualified due to convictions of a crime or offense.
I am not disqualified due to convictions of a crime or offense.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform...
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform...
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
At this time, I am going to turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, and congratulations to Mr. McCarron. I look forward to working with you in the future. And thank you for your commitment to being part of our Board of Education and working with our students in our school district. And I just also want to say it was impressive to see so many candidates turn out for the board seat. So, thank you to everyone. And congratulations to Mr. Sargent, who was elected to the township committee. And I'd like to thank him for all his years of service on the Board of Education as well. So tonight, I want to start with a preschool public forum hearing. It is required by the State of New Jersey that the Jackson Township Board of Education hold a public hearing on the waivers submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education to convert the D Wing at Jackson Memorial High School into space, complying with all the provisions of a high-quality preschool program to be used exclusively for the district preschool inclusion program. Space will allow for seven additional preschool classrooms to be utilized, beginning with the 2023-2024 school year. These rooms are at least eight hundred and... Are required to be... These rooms are eight hundred and sixteen square feet and will be housed approximately fifteen students in each classroom. The Department of Education requires a public hearing because of the recommended space footage is nine hundred and fifty square feet per classroom. I'd like to just go over a little bit of the information in regards to what this will entail in converting the D Wing at Memorial High School. It will entail changing the bathrooms to be appropriate for preschool, so there'll be some plumbing that will change and obviously fixtures. It will include reconfiguring the outside entrance to create a vestibule for safety and providing a separate entrance and exit to the preschool program so that no one needs to walk through the high school to get to the preschool program. The doors will be equipped with the same security systems that we currently have in all of our buildings, the swipe-in, the buzzing-in, and the requirements for showing identification. The entire wing will be closed off from the high school. Ms. Decker, who is actually here tonight, our supervisor of the preschool program, will be housed there. And the program will also have its own nurse within that wing. Essentially, what we're doing is creating a school-within-a-school model that is completely separate from the Memorial High School. That is basically the conversion that will take place for next school year in a four-to-seven additional classrooms. I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Walsh, that he can open the public forum piece of this hearing.
I will now open the floor to public comments on this change of use only. I need a motion to open public forum on the change of use only.
Motion. Second.
We will hold additional public forums during the meeting for other questions. This public forum will be the question... The only question on the change of use public forum. Please sign in, state your name, and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once until all others have been heard. Is there anyone who have questions on the change of use? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Turning it back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. So now I'd like to start with the way we always start our superintendent's report, with our high school board rep reports. So tonight, subbing for Jordan, we have Jose Linas Martinez from Liberty High School.
Good evening, Superintendent Pormili, Board of Education members, and guests. It is my pleasure to be back here again to fill you in on some of the noteworthy events happening at Liberty this past month. Winter sports officially opened up their seasons and are off to a great start. Girls' basketball won their first game on the road when they defeated Barnegat. The track team is already cashing headlines and even made the cover of Miles Split, New Jersey, because of their reputation. The ice hockey team is undefeated and feeling good. The guys' wrestling team traveled down to Delaware to compete in the Pice of the East Tournament and came home with many individual wins. Not to be outdone, the girls' wrestling team, the comprised both Memorial and Liberty athletes, hosted and won the Queen of the East Tournament this past weekend. It was a huge event, and being able to raise the trophy at the end was a fantastic bonus. We are excited to see what further success these teams will have in their Christmas tournaments and upcoming events. There has been a great deal of talent off the courts as well. Home for the Holidays kicked off this month and was a huge hit, as always. Liberty also hosted a Cars concert last week. There were many who showed up to listen to our gifted performers. Finally, our band will have their concert this Thursday night at 6:00 PM. We hope to see you there. There has been so much to celebrate this month, and it's hard to highlight them all. But there are few we wanted to mention. Liberty was thrilled to announce Yuli Zica as this year's Teacher of the Year. Teacher Ramirez showed that she doesn't just win with the wrestling program. She took home the title of Educational Service Professional of the Year as well. Congratulations to both of these worthy winners. Some students are impressive honors as well. AP Government student Tiffany Shine was selected to a position in the 2022-2023 New Jersey Model Congress. Additionally, Mayor Rosario was surprised by Marines visiting Liberty to award her with the coveted NROTC scholarship. To earn this distinction, she performed well on an aptitude test, as well as many other screenings, and was selected out of thousands of students to be one of only four winners in the state to earn full college tuition. Congratulations on such a remarkable achievement. This time of year is busy for everyone, and our clubs are no different. Liberty Lighthouse collected donations and volunteered at the Tinton Falls Animal Shelter. The Air Force Union ROTC and MUU Theta sponsor a Toys for Tots drive. NHS is running a bake sale all this week. The Jackson Academy of Business has been selling holiday cards at the Shack. The Inter Club held at the Toyland Event, which was held at the Jackson Center. The Key Club is helping with gift wrapping for those in need. Pals went to Rosanour to help with Family Night. If that wasn't enough, we just had our winter pep rally last week to help incite school spirit. Moreover, we're in the middle of our second spirit week in a row to help spread holiday cheer. Walking down the House of Liberty is an impressive experience between the festive outfits to pair with our themed days and all the door decorations that the homerooms wear on throughout each month. For one final push, Triumph will be performing as they deliver holiday grams at the end of this week. And JTV will once again captivate us all with our Christmas spectacular. As you can see, Liberty is buzzing with excitement and finishing 2022 off strong. I appreciate you giving me this platform to best represent some of the good news circulating around Liberty. I hope all of you have a safe and happy holiday season and look forward to filling you in on all we do in 2023. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jose. Very informative, lots of things happening at Liberty. Okay, next to the mic, I would like to call Keith for Memorial.
Good evening, Mrs. Pormili, members of the Central Administration staff and board members. Thank you for having me back to address you all once again regarding this month at Jackson Memorial High School. A month filled with holiday spirit and cheer. As for holiday school spirit, Memorial has had two joyful weeks of amusing and entertaining. Spirit Days bringing back classics like Pajama Day and even venturing into some daring themes like today's Winter Wonderland, encouraging people to show out in their snow gear like hats, boots, and ski goggles. The Get's Middle School Band and Choir have held their concerts in our auditorium, singing and playing holiday classics, spreading some holiday cheer to the local community. Not to mention last night, when our own high school band put on a wondrous evening show and even went around the holidays hallways, playing holiday tunes and engaging in some fun cheerful activities. In true Christmas spirit, the NHS, ROTC, and Key Club members have once again held the continuous standard of giving back and helped more than fifty families during the holiday season through the Adopt a Family event. Moving forward, we have some exciting things planned, such as the annual Lip Sync Battle, a spectacle we all look forward to, which will be held during... Which will be held a few weeks after we get back from break. We will also soon be having our next Student Council luncheon, where we hope to enjoy some good discussion and good food with all our Student Council leaders, along with Mr. Diogenio. On January 6th, the JMHS DECA members are excited to put on their suits in preparation for district competitions at Keene University in hopes to qualify for states, in which they earned a pizza party via winning first place for the DECA Hype Video Competition. I'm also very proud to announce a project that I myself have had a hand in starting up, that being the first broadcast of the show Good Morning Memorial, which will be debuted this Friday with a holiday special. We hope to continue broadcasting every so often throughout the rest of the school year, and a big thank you to Ms. Robinson and all the students who were involved in creating the segments. Seeing how today is the first day of winter, we have essentially ended our fall sports season, and winter sports are finally in swing. We started off fantastically with the girls' wrestling team placing first in the Queen of the East Tournament, and our boys' and girls' basketball teams starting off 3-0 with high expectations for the season. Selfishly, as a member of the boys' basketball team, we have been ranked number one in our division, number four in the shore, and replaced as the number one seed going into the annual WOBM Christmas Classic Tournament, hoping to bring home a trophy this winter break, knock on wood. Speaking of basketball, last Saturday was the annual Memorial vs. Liberty game, and me and the boys once again claimed dominance against our crosstown rivals. Before the game, both teams wore t-shirts for the NMB Foundation during warmups to bring awareness to the dangers of hazing in memory of Nolan Burke. Shout out to Liberty for making it an exciting game, and special thanks to both the Liberty and Memorial dance teams for putting on an amazing halftime show. I would like to once again thank Mrs. Pormili and the Board of Education for your continued support. I wish each and every one of you all a joyful holiday season and a prosperous new year. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to speaking with you all once again in the year 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said earlier, lots of wonderful things happening in our high schools, so many enriching activities, sports, and academic programs for our students here. I'm going to move on now to a couple of more business items. The district is required to update and board approve a required American Rescue Safe Return Plan every six months. It has been updated. It is on for approval this evening. It is also posted on our district website. It is the same as six months ago, except that we have revised it to eliminate many of the COVID protocols. However, we still have some protocols, such as our deep cleaning protocols, our hand washing, and proper health and hygiene practices still in place in that plan. Also tonight, on the addendum under Finance Number One, the board is approving a resolution supporting Bill A 4661. This is sponsored by Assemblyman Sewicki. Prior to that, we worked with Assemblyman Dancer to establish a... This bill is to establish a three-year non-public student transportation pilot program that certain districts would become eligible for. This bill would assist in a transportation consortium to be used for non-public busing, while the state would be funding the full cost of busing or aid and lieu in those districts that meet certain criteria. A letter of support of this bill is also going to be sent from the Jackson Administration and School Board, Brick Township, Toms River Township, and Manchester in support of this bill. This bill is significant and could have a massive impact to assist us in our budget situation that we are in between S2 and the increases in non-public funds that are needed for transportation. So we will continue to post that information and ask that our public also show support for that bill. We've been working with the Assemblymen to hopefully move that forward to help us tremendously, not just here, but in surrounding districts who will likely be experiencing the same things that we are here. And it's a win-win for everybody on this bill. So tonight also is the board meeting in which I give an update on our district goals and board goals. So for that, I'm going to go to the podium and go through and provide an update to the board of our district and board goals. So the presentation Board Members is behind you. Just refreshing our memory that our focus this year is in working at strengthening our core, our core programs and our core approaches to safety, relationships, and instruction. And if you recall, back in August when we went over these, refocusing ourselves on our district mission. Our district mission statement is strong. You can see the key words there that help keep us focused on important areas for our students in the Jackson Schools, followed by our statements and values and beliefs. You see the bold language there. These again are the areas of bringing us back and strengthening our core areas. With the focus this year in strengthening the core through physical and emotional safety, building connections with students, staff, and families, and rigorous differentiated instruction that all leads to positive engagement in school and rises in progress and high academic growth. Our first goal was in the area of safety. These are some of the areas that we targeted for the physical and facilities safety areas. I won't read them to you, but you can see them there. Next, you'll see the emotional and mental health goals, again related to safety. The basic needs of physical and personal safety must be met in order for individuals to move to higher levels of growth and be available for academic achievement, very much based on Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So for this area, you'll see some of the key... These are some samplings of some of the things that we have done thus far to address our goals in the safety area. One of the big things we did this year was to complete training for all of our staff on the standard response protocols. Those are our safety protocols in all of our buildings, so that it's consistent and consistent language is being used. We've been in constant conversations with police and our SRO officers. We have a very strong relationship and we've met several times. You can see here on some other bullets as well, we've addressed several issues with them. We've done school safety assessments and addressed any areas of need that we had seen, such as swipe accesses, cameras, and signage that is necessary. And one of the major initiatives that we have worked on has been the Behavioral Threat Assessment Process. This training was held for our administrators and our administrators and others helped turnkey in the fall to our staff. The Threat Assessment Team Training occurred across the entire district on the tool and also on addressing areas of concerns for identifying students of high risk in need of mental health support. We are very much ahead of the state on this. Again, our administrative team here was ahead of the curve. In fact, this is a law that is going to be required for next school year for all school districts, that there is threat assessment teams and those teams are trained and a protocol is used to identify students at risk. So as always, I always say we have incredible people here. Our team was well ahead of the curve. The next area of focus for us is always curriculum and instruction. This year, our curriculum instruction goals were developed around building relationships. The need for connection and belonging, as I said earlier, must be met before an individual can move on to greater levels of development and achievement. And these were some of the areas that we targeted as goals for our students. Again, a sampling of some of the things that we've done to address those goals includes returning back to our daily meetings and advisory period, which is a program through a responsive classroom to help identify and build relationships among peers and students and work on executive functioning skills in those programs and those advisory periods. We are also planning a June responsive classroom training. It's a pretty extensive training. We have many, many new staff and we feel that we need to train them, so we have established and set that up. The Common Lunch has been a huge way to address building relationships at our high school levels. There's so many opportunities for students to connect to each other during that time and so many opportunities for them to connect to staff as well. We even added some new clubs of esports and intermurals at our elementary level, and we're continuing with all of our academies at both high schools. With the budget as is as ours and the way we've been slashed $16 million, we have worked hard to budget wisely to keep those academies and we are continuing to focus on those. And this year, I've been so thrilled to be able to bring back my meetings with students and groups of students. I've already met with student councils at both middle schools and both high schools and will continue to expand on those. It's an excellent way for me to get feedback from our students. The next area of we targeted in curriculum was instructional engagement. These were some of the goal areas. By way of update, for these areas, we've returned to our initiative Problem-Based Learning and we've developed our teacher leaders to continue to train in those areas. It is something we had done before the pandemic. We've returned to it. We see great value in higher-level thinking in those types of activities. Our teacher leaders have been running trainings for that approach. We worked this summer to include more group work and collaborative work and projects into our curriculum, more authentic learning opportunities for students. And also through the summer curriculum writing, more choice has been built into our high school physical education program to engage more students in wanting to participate in more interest-level-based physical education instruction. So in the area of curriculum instruction, our final area we targeted is obviously rigor. These are some of the areas that we targeted as goals for us in that area. By way of update, we have followed our five-year curriculum adoption and our implementations. Our in-place for math, K-5, art, music, science, and K-12. We've provided a lot of professional development in those areas throughout the summer and at our most recent professional development days this fall. We are in review for these other content areas of math, 9-12, 21st Century Life and Careers, Business, Media, Technology. We'll be ongoing this year, reviewing our needs in those curriculum areas. We received a grant this year from NJIETA New Grant, which is basically a grant for working with our elementary teachers on inclusion into the general education population and really differentiating instruction in a general education classroom, Tier One is what we call. October 10th, Professional Development Day, we had lots of training happening on differentiation of instruction, really targeting students' individual needs and preparing students in the general education classroom at all different levels. New this year are our half-days for PD, and we just recently had one in December 12th. We've had excellent feedback from our teachers when we reviewed the survey data. We focused on the areas of data analysis, goal-setting, and student engagement. We continue to have teacher-led professional developments throughout the year and they're very effective. Our third area to target for goals this year was our homeschool connection. These are the goals in those areas. And by way of update, you can see some of the things, again a sampling of some of the things that we've done here. I'm sure you've seen the several district messages that have been sent out in regards to just information purposes for things that need to get accomplished, but also just to share all the wonderful things that happen in our districts and make people aware of them. Every Board meeting have been, you saw tonight scrolling, you got to see the opportunities that students have had most recently in our schools through the scrolling video footage as you walked in this evening. We've launched a family engagement webinar series this year online and that's been successful. And our Title One Family Nights have been amazingly successful. Most recently, we had 120 families come to Family Night at Rosenhour School. So we are really getting back into the swing of getting parents into our buildings, family engagement, and getting everybody connecting. Also, the preschool Family Night was a huge success as well, most recently. And I also wanted to mention that the senior citizens were invited to the Scrooge Play as well and had the opportunity to see Scrooge, which was phenomenal. Amazing talent. So we are working and continuing to update those areas of growth. Another goal that we had is in the area of human resources. You can see there are some lofty goals in that area. And by way of update, we continue to work to really try to bring in more diverse opportunities for teachers to be part of the Jackson staff here. As we all know, staffing is a huge area of difficulty right now, not only in Jackson, but in the state of New Jersey. To attract any kind of teachers to our positions have been very difficult to fill. So we continually strive to work on that. We have lots of conversations and meetings with other districts and continue to brainstorm. One of the biggest undertakings we've had in the Human Resource Department is our transition from no longer outsourcing our substitutes, but hiring our own substitutes. And that was a big undertaking that our HR department took this summer. And I have to say, they worked hard, long hours to make this happen, and it was with great success. We have many more substitutes available to us on a daily basis and we find that it's much easier to fill our long-term leaves because we are building relationships with people in our community. Many of those substitutes work in our community, or live in our community, rather. So that was a huge undertaking. We continue to work on that. Lots of things had to happen, training them, onboarding them. So this was a big undertaking. We continue to monitor and adjust with that, but I believe it was very successful. We've also transitioned to a new healthcare provider that took a lot of communication with our staff, lots of meetings, and we created a whole new website for our staff, so that it's one-stop. You're able to gather all sorts of information, any questions you might have about the healthcare, you know, new approaches, and it's all there on the website for our employees. And new for our employees this year around with our new healthcare plan is a new employee assistant program. So we continue to try to promote that and encourage our staff to use that program that's available to them. As far as the district goals, our final area is our Finance, Transportation, and Facilities area. These are some of the goals related there. And by way of update, we have started our preschool programs, playgrounds, rather. We're moving along. There's been a couple of hiccups here or there based on supply chain issues and weather delays, but they have all been started and we hope to see them be completed soon. Mentioned already, our support and our resolution for Bill A4461. We continue to apply for grants and many opportunities for bringing money to the district to accomplish the things that we feel are important. One of the bigger grants that Ms. Richardson has received is the Plumbing Grant, allowing us to have more updated fixtures, more efficient fixtures. So that has been a great help to update some of our older bathrooms. As I mentioned, there's many other grants that we approve monthly on our agenda every month. The Board approves them, that are school-based grants, and we continue to encourage our teachers, and our teachers are wonderful at applying for grants. And we all know about our preschool expansion opportunity. We continue to expand and be able to receive that additional state aid through our expansion. So it's a wonderful program to be able to offer that free to our community, the preschool opportunities. So those are some updates in the areas of our district goals. They're continuing to be ongoing, as you can imagine, and we will continue to work hard in those areas. The Board also sets goals every year. And there were four goals that the Board set this year, one around fiscal areas, as you see here. The other around curricular. Communication. And then finally, around the progress and updating ourselves and checking the status of our goals throughout the year. So by way of Board Goals Updates, again, for the third time, I don't think we can say it enough. We have worked hard to focus ourselves and working on this bill and making the public aware of that bill in order to help our budget. We'll begin working on the budget for '23-'24 in January. Again, the Board approves many grants. Monthly on the agenda, in October, we had the State of the Schools presentation, where you had the opportunity to review school-based data, district-based data, and provide feedback. We continue with our committee structure, where the Board also provides feedback, and we continue to highlight and display all of the wonderful things that happen in our district at Board Meetings. And today, we are meeting this by providing a mid-year update on our district goals. So just to bring it full circle, our '22-'23 goals are in motion and act as our guideposts as we strengthen our core and advance the mission of the Jackson School District. Thank you. When I go to my seat, I'll take any questions. Before I move on, are there any questions from the Board on the Goals Update? Okay. Okay, thank you. So I do want to just take a minute to point out some of the wonderful school happenings. You heard some from our high school Board reps, but hopefully you had the chance to see the video footage that was playing, all of the plays, the concerts that have been going on in our schools. We had lots of concerts focused on multicultural songs from all sorts of holidays, from Charlotte's Web. We had the plays from Charlotte's Web to Scrooge to the choral and band concerts in each of our middle and elementary schools. Experiencing them really does fill my heart. I'm always just blown away at the amazing talent and our teachers and their passion that they have in working with these students. So we wanted to share the joy with you this evening by sharing that loop of video footage. We're looking forward to seeing our elementary concerts next month as well. All of these performances are available on our JTV YouTube page as well, so check them out. Just wanted to highlight just a few things from some of what you saw and some of the other happenings in the districts. Very exciting, Jackson Liberty High School had a big surprise recently with a visit from ROTC officers, surprising student Maya Rosario with a Navy ROTC scholarship to pay her full college tuition. The officers came to Liberty to present her with the scholarship in a surprise event, and we are so proud of Maya and her dedication to excellence that earned her this opportunity. It was fantastic. So one of the most rewarding parts of being in education is seeing students work hard with each other. As part of the District Hour of Code activities recently, students from AP Computer Science and Computer Science classes and the Girls Who Code Club at Jackson Memorial High School helped inspire the next generation of students by working with students at Swillick Elementary School to learn a bit more about coding and computer science. It was fantastic. And I'm also happy to share some good news from the Jackson Memorial Band. Two instrumental music students traveled to Apesagami High School and auditioned for the Region III Symphonic Band, which is an ensemble that accepts the best students from Ocean County through the southern portion of New Jersey. One was chosen and one was just one point away. We are so very proud of both of those students. Speaking of band experiences, Liberty Music Teacher and Band Director Scott Cottone sent us some photos from some of our Jackson Academy Art and Music Students. They attended the Nutcracker at the State Theater. This is one of many master experiences we embed into our academic academies of learning that are designed to expose students to real-life applications and skills that they are learning. And finally, in the spirit of the season, I close with some photos from our FBLA Club, which stands for the Future Business Leaders of American Club. About 25 FBLA students did a service project called Do Good December. They wanted to honor the unsung heroes of their school, so they provided coffee and donuts for the bus drivers, custodians, security staff, and cafeteria workers. This was a student-driven activity that shows their connection to the community and we are certainly proud of their initiative. This is just a sampling of some of the wonderful things going on in our schools. Amazing. So I have one more, and then I will conclude my report for this evening. So tonight... Tonight is Board President, Mr. Walsh's last meeting. He's retiring from the Board. tonight is Board President, Mr. Walsh's last meeting. He's retiring from the board. He did not seek reelection. Mr. Walsh's years of dedication to education is outstanding. He began as a teacher here in 1982. He was also a athletic director, a supervisor here, supervisor of science, I said athletic director, assistant principal, and a coach for Memorial Football. He also has served as the president of the Scholarship Committee for several years, helping to organize thousands of scholarships to our students. And he was elected to the school board in 2016 and has served the school and the school board. Mr. Walsh, not only do I thank you for your time and hard work with the Board of Education, but also for your commitment, impact, and legacy you leave in our schools. Your impact on students' education is far and wide and to be commended. You will be missed, and thank you for your service. So, before I turn it over to, back to Mr. Walsh, I do want to wish everyone safe and happy holidays. The district is closed from December 26th through January 2nd. We reopen on January 3rd. I hope everybody has an opportunity to have some fun and celebrate with their families. So, that will conclude my superintendent's report. I am going to just say one more thing in regards to the agenda. I would like to administratively replace Personnel Item Number 28 and replace it with the motion Mr. Zidder will read.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the termination of Employee ID Number 2223-10/112458 effective immediately, and be it further resolved that the employee shall be paid for the notice period in her individual employment contract.
Mr. Walsh, I return the meeting to you.
I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion. Second.
Seeing no discussions, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Standing Committee reports, there will be no committee meetings this month. Committees will resume in January after the board has reorganized. But Special Ed would like to do a little presentation from Dr. Taylor.
Less a presentation, more of an announcement. The Special Education Advisory Council is currently planning two presentations, February to March, dates to be determined. Both of them have to do with transition after high school. One will be Ocean County Community College Office of Student Disabilities to help prepare families for that transition and how it's different after they leave our schools. The other one will be for the other end of the continuum of students who graduate, really looking at supports and services. Division of Developmental Disabilities is typically one of our presenters. Sometimes we have the Department of Vocational Rehabilitation Services as well. We're attempting to set that up with ARC of New Jersey at this time. I also asked Joe Palumbo to join me to discuss the presentation we just held in December, so.
Hi, everyone. Just wanted to quickly say thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. In collaboration with the CAC Committee, on December 7th, we held a in-person parent information session with two speakers, one from the Children's Mobile Response Program, Perform Care, as well as Preferred Behavioral Health Care. We felt in collaboration that our departments see, are seeing, you know, an uptick, obviously, in mental health needs, and we wanted to provide easy access for parents to not only understand where to get help, but how to get help and what the help looks like in a more tangible form. So, we held, again, on December 7th here at Liberty, an in-person session where two presenters talked about, you know, the Perform Care and how to access the mental health services, and then the Preferred Behavioral Health Care, the types of services available to our students, their families, and just trying to make it a more accessible thing for those families, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. And just as a final note, all of our meetings have been, our presentations have been in person this year. Our following ones will probably be hybrid, allowing further access to families who may have childcare issues. So, it'll be both in person but also recorded live at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Great information. I need a motion for approval of Regulations, Adoptments.
Motion. Second.
Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the minutes, the official board meeting, November 16th, 2022, closed session meeting, official board meeting, November 16th, 2022, Committee of the Whole and Business Meeting.
Motion. Second.
Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
I abstain due to absence.
Okay, I need a motion for approval of the bills list.
Motion. Second.
Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion for approval of the Treasurers and Board Secretaries' reports.
Motion. Second.
Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion to open public forum on Agenda Items Only. We will hold another public forum during the meeting for any other questions. The public forum will be for just Agenda Items Only.
Motion. Second.
Please sign in, state your name, and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person will be allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. Anyone? Seeing no one coming forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Second.
All in favor? I need a motion to move the official meeting schedule revision.
Motion. Second.
Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move Finance.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
I would, I would like to just remind the public and urge the public to contact your local legislators regarding this Bill A 4461 regarding the transportation. The more people that speak out about it and get it out there, I think the more that we can help move it. It will be beneficial not only to our district, but to the others that are signing this as well. Brick, Howell.
Tom's River.
Tom's River. So, and we're all being impacted severely. So, just remember to contact your local legislators. Thank you.
I would like to also add, the state has a broken school district's funding formula. It has two cuts decimating district budgets and now unfunded mandates. How does the state and our governor think that they are properly funding school districts? If the state wants to mandate, they should also fund those mandates. And this bill, by Assemblyman Suwicky, Bill Number 4461, will help alleviate some of the pressure of that, of this particular mandate, which is for transportation. So, I urge you, like Mrs. Cass, reach out, support it, because it's going to help a lot of school districts, and it could save millions of
I do have a question about Line Item Number Five, the Burlington County JIF. Michelle, is that replacing the Atlantic Cape May County JIF?
Yes. The meeting, the month before, I talked to the board about this, that we would just be moving, we're still in the Spell JIF, which is the larger group that we're in, but I would want to move up to the Burlington. It's closer to us. It would not affect us financially in any way, but it would just be us.
Okay, so financially, it's the same. It's just, it's closer to us.
It's the same. And the benefits that we have from the other one, we still have. Any ratings that we still are getting refunded to us will still be refunded to us.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Finance Number Three, I abstain, yes to all else.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move Facilities.
Motion. Second.
Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move Programs.
Motion. Second.
Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move Students.
Motion. Second.
Seeing no discussion, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Motion to move Personnel.
Motion. Second.
I do have a question. I see on there that there is two retirements as far as bus drivers are concerned and one resignation. Do we have replacements for them?
I'm sorry, do we have what?
Replacements for them?
We are searching hard to get replacements for all of those positions, yes.
Okay, so we're kind of pushing the envelope, then?
Yeah. You know, we can't stop people from choosing to retire.
Oh, I understand that. I'm retired myself.
But we are doing our best. Yeah, we are doing our best to try to be more creative with that, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
I abstain.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Need a motion to open public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education.
Motion. Second.
Please sign in, state your name, and whether or not you're a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. Go ahead.
Hey, Lisa, I have a tape here. When it gets too yellow.
Got it. I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief. So, for those of you that aren't, even though I, I believe you know, Lisa Crete, I'm the president of the Jackson Education Association, and I just wanted to deliver what I think is some good news for the end of our school, not the end of the school year, but the end of 2022. So, we put out to our members each year the opportunity to get grants for different programs that they're running either in their school or in their classroom with families involved. And I wanted to let you know that this year, we had, we're able to fund 96 events with a total funding request of $63,278.58. So, some of the things that you have up on our board here and some of the things that you've talked about are some of the things that we have helped fund. Title I nights that we held in Rosenhour and Crawford and future Title I nights that are being held throughout the district. We're providing meals for the families that come, so we, we purchase boxed lunches from Panera that families can take with them. And usually, it's not just one meal per family, but they bring their children, so families get to take two, three, four boxes home with them for each of those events. We're sponsoring some preschool evenings that are taking place throughout the year. We've done items in classrooms, gingerbread days. Just recently, at Elm's, we helped to fund all of the purchases for the We Read Together program that was held at Elm's. So, we, we helped to purchase the, the little packages and the books that went in those and all of the different items that went with, home with the children and their families to help them practice reading at home. So, I just wanted to make you aware of those are some of the things that we're doing, and I, I'm very appreciative that on the board up there, especially you're, you're helping us to put out into the public, the coat drive that we're hosting from January 3rd through 10th. We're inviting anyone from the public who has a gently-used or new coat that they'd like to donate. We'll have collection boxes at all 10 buildings and at the administrative, Administration Building. So, if you could bring by any coats that you're cleaning out your closets over the holidays, please do so. And then on Saturday, January 14th, at Liberty High School, we are going to host a Community Coat, not collection, a Community Coat Distribution Day. Anyone from the Jackson community, anyone, can come to Liberty that day, and we will have coats for you to come and get for free. So, we'll also put that out there to the public once the new year comes along so that they're not confused between the collection and the distribution day. So, I appreciate the time. I have a couple of minutes left, but I'm going to wrap it up, and I yield back my 2 minutes and 50 seconds. Have a happy new year, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays for anything else you may celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Good news.
Okay, all right. Congratulations, 818 Bryan Drive, Jackson, New Jersey. First of all, hell of a job, Mike. Good job. You should be proud. Walk out with your head high. Now, I would also like to congratulate the new board member. Your, your new skills are well, very well needed, and we look forward to your contribution to the board. I have one issue that I hope you take seriously, seriously. It has to do with transportation. There are two facets to transportation. One of them is, we know what can happen to a school district if we don't manage the cost of transportation. So, we need the state to understand that a school district can be diminished because transportation is, the funding is neglected. So, I support this effort to, to get the state to have a standard funding formula. The, the other issue, which you might think is kind of happier, you know, up in the stars type of stuff, is I would, I would suggest that you get a committee or a group of people to find out what other school districts are doing to make their bus drivers happy, to keep them satisfied, to make their, keep.
them satisfied, to make their, keep what is keeping the bus drivers stay in those school districts. Because basically, it's not only that we can't fund, and so we can't keep, and we need to have an effort to find out what are they doing right in this school district that's keeping the bus drivers happy, and do the same thing here or improve on it. I tell you, it's not frivolous to find out what works in another school district might work here. And if it works here, one of the issues that we have is keeping bus drivers. And if we keep bus drivers, and they're content, they'll be more productive, any employee that is more productive saves us money. I mean, that's a fact of the economy. And the new Board member? Good luck, really. Thank you. Good night. Merry Christmas. Thank you guys. Anyone else have any questions? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will start with Board Comments. Mrs. Cass?
Hello. Well, first, I would like to thank all the candidates that came out this evening. It was a pleasure to listen to all of you. I would like to remind everyone that there is an election coming up, as was stated earlier, so in July, get your packets. It was, it was tough to pick, it was, you know, there was a lot of good information out there, so I think you guys all had something different. So I just want to thank you and remind you that. I want to welcome Brian to the Board. Thank you, we do look forward to working with you. I wanted to say, oh, the kids left. I wanted to wish Keith good luck on his basketball, and it's always a pleasure to have them speak. I did, Mrs. Brockus and I did get a chance to go to the Liberty Chorus Concert, which was fabulous. So as always, I mean, over the years, I've gone to different things, some of the band concerts and stuff, they always do amazing performances. I just think our kids are so talented, and it's wonderful. What else did, and then I just wanted to, I wanted to say thank Lisa for everything that she said before, and those are all great things. So, and the only other thing is, Mike, I just wanted to say thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you this past year, so you will be definitely missed.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, and, I don't know, go find a hobby, something you like to do, enjoy it.
Believe it or not, I got enough things keeping me busy.
And I just want to wish everyone, you know, Happy Holidays and a very happy and healthy new year. Thank you.
Mr. Palmieri, thank you.
I would like to start by thanking Mr. Walsh for his service to this Board and his time served, as well as your guidance personally over this last year. I would like to congratulate Mr. McCarron for his appointment to this Board. I look forward in working with you. I know together, this Board will continue to do great things for all of our students and this great town. Finally, I'd like to say Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy Holidays to all. May everyone have a safe and healthy new year, and God bless you, and have a good night.
Mrs. Osmond?
Hi, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out today. Today was a really nice meeting. I like knowing that we live in a town and that we volunteer our time in a place where so many other people want to get involved. We had in the teens of people who applied to get this open seat, and every single person who applied brought something to the table. It was a really, really good pool of people, which as a parent in this town, that made me very happy to know that as people move on from this Board, there's other good people to take these seats over. We had educators, we had scientists, we had law, you know, people in law enforcement, so it was a really good pool of people, and I hope, I really encourage those who did not get it tonight to try to do it through the election and get a longer, a term, a seat for a longer term. So thank you all for coming out. I wish you all a happy holiday. Congratulations to you. Mike, thank you so much for your service. You will be missed.
Thank you. Mr. McCarron?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I know there's a lot of great candidates that put in for this. I appreciate the fact that I was chosen. I look forward to working with everybody, and I wish everybody a Happy Holiday and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Mrs. Rivera?
I want to thank everyone for coming out, the presentations and input. I thank you, Mr. Walsh, for all your years of service and collaborative efforts. Congratulations, Mr. McCarron, on being selected as a new Board member, and everyone have a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you. I'd like to say, tonight was a little difficult, okay? It was good that it was difficult, there was 13 people, all of them had qualifications, all of them could be sitting up here someday, okay, if they decide to run. They would be good candidates, and Jackson is in good stead with the people of this town, okay, and their interest in the educational system. It's been my honor, okay, for all these years to work with the students, the parents, teachers and staff, the administration, and these Board members. I think we're in a good place, but boy, there is some bumps in the road that we're going to have to handle in the future. If you ever want a suggestion, give me a call. I don't know, I might be up here again someday, who knows? But right now, my wife's retired, and I'm going on some vacations. Have a happy holiday, have a safe ride home. Motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.